Call the order. Um, roll call. Tracy's absent. Lucy Dilber?
Present.
John is absent. Genevieve Brodza? Karen Craig Sims?
Here.
Steve Metelik?
Here.
And Rachel Bittsitt?
Here.
Okay, public hearings, we have none. Uh, approval of the agenda. I would like to add, under new business, the 2020 planning schedule. Very well.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Um, public comments on agenda items. Uh, approval of the minutes. Did everybody get last month's minutes?
Yes.
Did everybody get a chance to look them over? See anything? Good. Okay, a motion then is need to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried to approve minutes for November 5th, 2019. Uh, communication correspondence and workshop. I don't have any, unless, does anyone know? Rich, you might know the date of the Christmas luncheon that's here?
Do not know.
I do not know, so watch your email. Everybody will be invited for the Christmas luncheon, but I, I don't know the date. Um, anybody else have any communication? I'm sorry if I asked that. Good. Okay, matters for consideration. Old business master plan downtown. Did everybody have a chance to take a look at that and review that section? You guys good?
Yes.
Okay, John, if you want to start, and then what I thought we would do is just go around, and if anybody has any feedback or any type of input, I've also shared with everybody Tracy. If you guys got a chance to look at that as well. And so we'll just go around the table and get everybody's feedback on that. But we'll start with John and...
Okay. Great. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out and doing your homework on the downtown vision section of the future land use plan. Really appreciate it. Tonight, I'd like us to, like, my chairman was saying, that we would go through and discuss some more feedback and some more points that we have deduced from reviewing this thing. I think for the most part, what we should probably look at this as is not necessarily completely rewrite all these types of goals and objectives, but we can tally off things that we've accomplished, we can kind of edit things that may need to be edited, that may be more better refined, or maybe don't apply anymore, or kind of different goals in the past. That's something we can look at as we go forward through all these sections, especially this downtown section. I think the biggest things that glared out to me were the same things that Tracy noted in her notes, that it looks like there were two things that we did accomplish. Specifically, that objective 1.2, which was doing that entry sign, is something that was accomplished for that portion. And from what I understand, with the pedestrian paths, there has been improvements with those type of things, right? But, yeah, I'd like to hear your feedback before I do anything else, and then kind of take notes on that, and then see what we can put together, at least in this section.
Okay, so we will start with Steve.
So we're at, we're talking the downtown vision, right?
Yep.
Okay. I looked at goal number three. Increase tax base by attracting new businesses to downtown.
Yep.
Encourage home-based businesses, advocate the community as an attractive place to live or play in, but business encourage the consolidation, smaller residential shops. Okay, and my question was on the objective 3.3. I guess we'd have to look back to the map for our land use. Is that possible?
Um, encourage consolidation, smaller residential lots.
Yeah, I was wondering if some of those lots are just, you know, with the boundary and how things are zoned, that was just the one question I had. I mean, would that be, if it's on here, I'm guessing that it's possible. I just wondered, is that achievable?
I, I think, I mean...
I'd have to look at the map.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I know with the residential areas that we have, I know one of the things that we do have is, we have a very traditional and older setup for how everything was split and divided and everything else. In order to do a combination, it would be too difficult, but if something is achievable, it would just need the right owner who's willing to accumulate the properties necessary to combine them. Now, I think that the question is, are you looking to get rid of those smaller lots? Or do you want to keep that smaller lot character of the, of the village? Because that whole idea of going from a small lot to a larger lot, that's essentially what you're doing, is you double up the size or triple it up, depending on what you're trying to do.
Right, because my thought would be, if that was the case, if we were consolidated to a larger lot, would that open up the eyes for larger businesses? Because, thought I had with number 3.3, but then I know 3.1 is encourage home-based businesses, so I guess I'd like to be able to see both.
I guess something similar to that would be basically what just happened with the liquor store that we just approved. Like, they're technically consolidating lots, creating a larger lot, and then developing a liquor store. Now, is it exactly what this goal of the project was envisioning? It's not necessarily, but it's in a spirit of what this was trying to achieve. Part of it was to eliminate some of those back and forth lots that may be smaller and may have proven they're not in line with the dimensions. But yeah, I think, I think it's definitely possible. I think strategically, it might make sense to target specific areas that we're trying to say, hey, we can market these four parcels together, and this is a great opportunity for something to come in here, if you do have a, an owner who's willing to work with the community and market that in concept together.
Right, right.
Like you said, if our lease location might be an option, if they're willing to come to the table and talk to us, because that's a pretty big, pretty good site there, a pretty important one.
It is.
There's a number of, along Greshit, or whatever road that we have through here, that you could see those, those corners, and find those opportunities, just gotta make sure that we have those relationships there. Yep.
You guys got anything else on that one?
I'll, I'll just wait, because I have more than that all. We'll just, do you have anything else, Steve, or?
Nothing, it's like, nothing that's screaming out at me at the moment, but as we continue to talk...
Okay.
Something might jump out.
Okay, so we'll move on. Luz, do you have anything?
We have to get some communication going with the people that own, that prop, those properties, because their downtown looks horrible.
Right. I don't disagree. I say I don't disagree. Very good.
Most of it is owned, isn't it? Most of the land is owned by...
Yeah, we don't have any of that.
Right. Really kind of coverless still.
Right. And we don't know the status of the soils, and I think that's a huge hurdle right there, because first of all, we don't own it or have any input in what people do with it, and plus, we don't even know if it's manageable, and I think that's a huge problem.
And that's actually one of the meetings I know us internally, that we've been trying to target, is one to sit down with some of the owners and see if they do have at least some preliminary done environmental studies, see if they have at least a phase one or phase two.
There was one done when we did the water project back in, now I don't know if it would be with that project, which was with Foscon.
Okay.
But I don't know if the documents would be housed here, but there was one done at that point in time, because they were going into the main street, so they had to do a sample.
Okay.
So I think it was just preliminary, but I don't recall it coming back too great.
Okay. Yeah, because the biggest thing is at least like being aware of what the reality is of the site, and depending on what that is. A lot of times, those reports will say exactly what can be developed. I know there's one in UNEGA that we're working on, that the environmental came back, you did the phase one, which is traditionally just like an image, an aerial review over the street, and then the phase two, as they started doing test boards, and they're saying that you can do commercially, there's no way you can ever do residential.
Right, and I think we were just to note Rob Canal, you know, set in 15. I think we were, we were in a position where we couldn't do anything with basements, they all had to be detached, and you only built, no residential. I, that's my understanding of when we got those results back then, but that was about 10 years ago, eight years ago, or so.
Okay.
Okay, Luz, anything else? Craig?
I pretty much just saying this, Steve, 3.3, 3.4, 3.4, identifying each market that will attract visitors from other communities. I don't know if we need to define that more. What type of market do we want to attract? That will attract visitors to the community.
Anything else? Right?
So the environmental cleanup, because we don't own it, how far can we reach into looking at it? I mean...
It's one of those things where like, we can at least have a conversation and see if the landowners are willing to provide that information to us. In the end, if they want to, or do you have any type of remediation or cleanup or anything like that, most likely, they're going to come to us to set up some sort of like brownfield with like a TIF, or get some type of revolving loan fund, or whatever it is, and they're going to need some sort of like recommendation from the community to the county, and which I'm doing some census of the state and media or anything else, so...
So are the hands seem to be tied until they approach us?
We can reach out to them.
Oh.
If we can set up the media if we wanted to, and at least start a conversation and see, hey, would you guys be willing to talk? We've talked with them in the past, like, a couple of years ago, they were kind of redeveloping something up the site, give us some new stuff, maybe not necessarily new buildings, but reoccupy and try to rehabilitate the site a little bit. We've had conversations with them in the past, so it's something that could be done again. I know that's one of the master plan goals, it's too specific, we have a conversation with that, with that site, as well as others. But yeah, it has to be a voluntary thing, at least right now, where they have to produce that for us, unless we have records of our own from previous projects.
You good? Rob, just so you know, we're going just around the table with everybody giving their input on, on this. Okay, so you're up.
I'm just piggybacking on her.
Okay.
As a village, can we produce ordinances that say, hey, you know, you cannot, you've had this property for many years and you have not cleaned it up? And either force their hand or find them, or, because, I mean, they have a site there that has dangerous materials on it. It's not all fenced in, so kids could ride their bikes over there, and...
Yeah, it's a...
It's a public health. Why, as a village, can't we force them to start doing something with it? They, they've been sitting on it for years.
I'm not sure in terms of the environmental thing, I'm astute of it. It's not my area of expertise, I can do some research into that and see if there's something that could be done to, to force their hands, type of thing. I know traditionally, most of these sites, like, if there is enough of a hazard, public safety, public welfare, welfare, a lot of times, you can get them to fence it off and put like a hazard sign or something like that. But I'm not sure how it gets set up, and it's by a lot of mechanisms that that's achieved.
I don't think they're necessarily like that, honestly.
Yeah.
That's kind of unsightly, too.
Yeah, so, but a lot of times, like, it's, it's kind of a hand, hand paper, it's usually market driven, and it's through incentives that are probably be provided. So there's a couple of different things, but I can look into, if there's actually on a city side in terms of erosion something there, but...
Well, could, is it, so my understanding of those sorts of circumstances is over time, with rain and erosion and everything like that, that's probably underneath our property at this point anyways now, it's probably, like, we could probably sample it and get a pretty good idea on our own end, what's there, just from what's run on to the surrounding area.
Yeah, I don't think in the past, don't quote me on this, but I believe the old Ford plans at 23 and mile, I believe they're shelving, whatever it is, whatever you have it on this. There's a loss in brought up a number of years ago, because whatever cleaning fluid that they're using, lesions in the ground, guys in the yard waters, they're spreading it out to the surrounding area, and there's some type of health impact that they're able to prove, and then they're able to have this lawsuit, which then kind of spurred or catalyzed the cleanup of that site with the brownfield program. Those are probably some of the circumstances where you have to be able to prove those type of stuff, do the sampling and stuff. I believe those are probably more so the, like, rarer cases than it would be for the municipal.
How much land is that? How many acres, or how many acres?
I don't know, do you know? Just, I have no idea.
Yeah, I don't think it answers...
It goes back to herself.
Yeah.
It's big.
Pretty huge.
It's a good triangle, the way those shapes does.
Rob, did you have anything else you'd like to say? I just want some more of a conversation, not really pinpointing on any of this, is, after being here like for 10 years or so, I find that, and it's not that I, as I said, it's not that I don't want to see this downtown prosper, I do, but I find it's kind of a stalemate. It, there's not a lot of room for growth, we've had those conversations before, we don't own it, and we can't really dictate what people say. So with that being said, we have discussed with Jeff in the past, or I'm not sure if we did it today, we're on the side, but considering what we have better control over, which would be Greshit. And perhaps collecting tips from the Greshit standpoint, and doing stuff to further enhance Greshit. And my personal thoughts on it, if you're driving down Greshit, and I said this, Rob's probably heard me, it's a broken record, if you're driving down Greshit, what makes you want to turn left or right? If Greshit looks the way that it does, do you really want to go deeper? And if we clean up Greshit and really invest in Greshit, and put more oversight for the properties up for sale, if property's selling, they're turning over, we have good code enforcement now, you know, do we maybe focus more so on like a Greshit improvement as opposed to a downtown improvement, which we have a little more control over? Thoughts? Anybody?
I do have thoughts on Greshit. Years ago, I served on a SEMCO committee that worked on the traffic of Greshit through all the communities. And at that time, I had lobbied to get Greshit made into a boulevard, the lower speed limit, so that it makes it more attractive for businesses to locate there, because instead of cruising through here at 50 miles an hour, 55 miles an hour, they're down to 35 miles an hour, not to mention, there's a lot of evidence to support that, that I got that pushed through because of the amount of accidents, amount of people killed on Greshit, especially in Chesterfield. I mean, there's been a large amount of deaths of pedestrians trying to cross the street and get run over. The fact that so much of the land is residential, there's a library site, a medical center site, the high school site, and ice cream, there's all these things that are there. And then our small town, just like, you know, you cruise into Richmond, and then once you hit the Richmond limits, you gotta slow it down, and, you know, you're not doing 55 miles an hour through there. Our area is not any different, there's a large amount of residential on our north end of Greshit, the trailer parks, you know...
We get a kid killed on Greshit and couldn't get the speed limit lowered, so...
Just a high school, a lot should be a good reason to...
Well, it was part, supposed to, it was part of a master plan that fizzled out and never got approved years ago, when I was on planning, and it hadn't been approved by council when I left. And that was our plan, was to, you know, 10 years ago, to lobby the state. You know, since then, they've come in and finished off more of Greshit and Chesterfield into a 50 mi, 5 mile an hour zone. But I'd like to see us put that in our master plan and lobby the state, say, hey, why would, you know, our small village be treated differently than, well, even take it through going through Roseville, if you don't do 55 miles an hour to the middle of Roseville, in their downtown district, it goes down to 35.
So was, was it always been 50, 55?
It's always been 55 that I know.
I, I do agree, when the speed limit was set, there was nothing on Greshit. I mean, it's changed, I think it needs to be looked at.
Yeah, and that was the evidence we had, the lobby, that committee, the SEMCO committee, was to show them all these things that were...
And I don't understand, why do you have such a fight?
Because people want to go best.
Well, I understand that, but it, I mean...
It wasn't that...
To me, I feel this, I feel this way from a planning perspective and a personal perspective. The people that want to drive fast on Greshit are driving through New Haven, not home to New Haven. And so I don't understand why, I mean, why, if we are saying, listen for us, we want this brought down, why do we get such a pushback on it?
A lot of it is the DOTs are predominantly engineers and shadowy planners. And I think just the approach of how these groups and departments work is all about efficiency, about their plans, and how to keep the flows the way they are, timing, all these different factors that are part of a greater system. And also, because roads like Greshit, or Michigan Avenue, or Woodward, or roads like that, there's also, I'm not 100% sure in Greshit, especially like the Michigan Avenue, a lot of times, these roads are also have other purposes for a while, aside the way that they are. Mostly with like national security type reasons as well. So there's implications with that, so like, I know, like, Michigan Avenue and Woodward, the design is still wide in most cases, because of the fact that, in the case of the reverse in downtown Detroit, you'd have one-way traffic going uptown, and even else, it's for military mobilization, so they have those different reasons behind the type of dimension that we do. So when you do approach MDOT, or the feds, or whoever it is, like in these cases, they'll end up having design limitations because of those, those things that they're thinking of. But I know some of those battles have been won in the past. It takes a lot of fighting, many, many years of fighting, and the biggest thing that had to kind of persuade people are either temporary things, where they can do this, but with the rights and ability to revert back to the original plan, if the original design seemed to not work, if they had a need for it, or you can demonstrate the safety aspect, where you're having numerous people get killed, and it's just a very evidence saving here. But I think, from a client perspective, like, I can always make the argument for slowing traffic down and doing different treatments to improve the walkability and safety of the road and the functionality of the road. I mean, the way that Greshit's designed, a lot of these things, a lot of people call it, call them strobes, if your streets rose and kind of high bridge with five lanes, you carry across them, you can't do anything with them, like, you're not servicing any real purpose of flying through an area, it's a highway assumption. But in a more suburban type setting, just...
Right, that's kind of how I feel.
Yeah, it's like a freeway sign, basically, is what you end up with.
And what we achieved was the light in the even road at that time.
Well, we could get something.
That you think that, is there a cross from high school, there a kid getting that?
Well, that's horrifying, because you guys sat there and watched that, and nobody, nobody stops for that.
No, they go right through the lights. I just tried to cross, my boy scouts back, or the cross, but nobody...
Crosswalks, it's a yellow, I, I don't detect on the light for it.
Like, hobbly road, or...
Yeah.
Yeah, and they just push a button, but, I mean...
I'm already going fishing, I'm, I'm trying to kind of see it.
Oh, I see them just push the button and walk. Well, that gotta give me time to hit like brakes, to see if they're just walking.
That's what scares me, because most, many people, if you've sat there, many people don't hit their brakes, they just keep going, they don't even recognize that it's going on.
You're up to go for the dish by this one hour, but it's funny, that figure out.
I've crossed there a couple times, and both cars, full-time cars have stopped. I think it's because they saw me standing there, and they didn't know what they should do, so they just stopped.
Yeah.
So I guess I got lucky.
Probably also when you see an adult, to, to... When you see an adult.
Yeah, I was on my bike, and I was alone, we were trying to cross, and I hit the button and waited, and it was like one car, so I don't think the guy knew what to do, so he stopped. I guess...
Yeah, it's 50 right there, and then 55.
It was 40, 40 right school.
50 after, or 55 after.
Like I said before, like, this is something that people start to grapple with a little bit, starting to ramp it up a little better, it's just like form fits function. So if you're gonna have the form that tells all your, your inner cues that you're looking for, that this is essentially your freeway angle, 55, I would do whatever, pedestrians, then you're gonna throw a hobbly there, like, it's counter to it, it goes against what your, what your instincts are telling you, and how you're feeling in this environment. So, and the other thing, too, is that you're conditioned to drive a certain way, no different environments. So when you do have something that's starting to curveball like that, most people don't respond, don't respond how you would want them to, in terms of, in terms of being more vigilant about pedestrians and stuff. So that's why a lot of times, they'll see, you know, with these type of environments, they'll start putting like, uh, street trees, they'll start trying to increase the bulk on there, so that way the scale is representative of the speed that you want people to drive at.
The boulevard.
Yeah, exactly, the boulevard.
A big change from the five lane now.
Just like you said, they, you both decided, no one that started out at 23 miles, looking at the signs to change when they scoot through them, and they're still lying to the earth.
Is there a, like, a minimum requirement for the state to consider lowering it, is there like, so many businesses, I know there's, you know, car traffic might be one of them, but I'm wondering, is it more so how much business is on that road to trigger?
Does speed trigger, type of thing?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, that kind of a good question for the engineers.
What is the school zone limit? I mean...
I don't know, it's usually 35.
Yeah, because I don't even think we reached the school zone limit when it comes to the high school. I, I think we see that...
Is there a flashing light at all?
No, not that there's no warning, like, there, you know, when you come through, through Baltimore, they, they slip right down to 25, where the kids are going to school, leaving from school, and that just flashes for that hour. They don't even have anything, no predictor or anything. There's a sign, I think, that says school, like, just one of those blanket signs with no lights, is it?
Yeah, they have that.
Mars, the MDOT?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So, for the school, the speed limit in front of the school, I had, within the last year, three or four people contacted me about the speed limit in front of the school, and I reached out to MDOT to find out what the process is. Outside the school, it's, it's very bureaucratic, there's a lot of steps involved, it's very complicated to do. The very first step in front of the school was a letter from the superintendent of schools to MDOT requesting that the speed limit be lowered, and then they would conduct a bunch of tests at that point, but that was the very first step. I relayed that information out.
Did you reach out to, to Barb?
Barb.
The superintendent of the school district?
No.
I think it was the other one.
It was the previous superintendent.
Oh, Todd?
Todd.
Yeah, it was Todd at the time, but, yeah, I, the, so this is the contact me, I relayed that information out to them, because if they were the ones, I was spearheading it. But I, I found the information that they need, I don't have it on there right now, but I went and got all the information I could from MDOT, relayed it to them, and then, I don't know what happened with it, but the speed limit's still 45, so I don't think much. But I don't think, it's not a quick, I don't think anything involving that would be a quick fix, like, you can't just get it dropped in a year.
But I think even getting it dropped is just during school hours?
No, it'll be a...
It was a full-time thing in front of the school?
Yeah, the school, the school district has a lot of control of the speed limit in front of the school, from that dot's perspective.
If you notice, on Chesterfield Road, I don't know what name of that elementary school, right on the corner of 24 and Chesterfield? And you're heading north, you're passing all those build, you know, businesses on the right, and let's say 35, school 35, one flashing or something like that? Well, it's flashing, you know it's 35, after that, I think it's 50? I'm not sure, but... When it's flashing, you know it's 35. After that, I think it's 50. I'm not sure, but. So that's probably what you're saying is that school had a lot to do with that. Cause there's really nothing on that road other than houses and a few businesses.
Right.
I wonder maybe we could look at that, 35 when flashing or during school hours, because it's set from like seven to, I don't know, seven to noon and then two.
Well, if you have the information, can you forward that to us?
Okay.
That would help the buses get in and out of there too.
Yeah, cause I can only, I mean, just in front of the high school, that would be tough to pull in and pull out, especially pulling out of school while still a kid trying to get a 55 in the bus. Or actually, it's about 45 there, right?
It's 45 in front of anybody 35 and.
No, they, they, no.
The biggest problem with any kind of timed or lighted type solution is it's not a true solution because like the kid that got hit in September, it was off school hours. I mean, kids are going back and forth to that high school constantly because they got practice, they got, they're leaving school late after the hours. Coming crossing back and forth across Greshit continuously all day, all weekend.
But from what it sounded like, we just had to have a superintendent help us out if you're getting in front of a school at least.
But I mean, as far as a solution of flashing lights at times, that is not gonna really, that's not a true solution if that's what MDOT.
No, no, you just said, no, it wasn't during school hours. It was the school had to help, but it's not just during school hours.
There, there was two processes, but the, the first one to initiate it was a letter from the superintendent to MDOT requesting that the speed, that's the only stuff I can remember. That's, that's what initiated it, was step one.
Why don't we initiate a letter from us to?
Why don't we do that on, why don't we do an official letter from the planning department?
He said, help pull the information and send it to us so we know the steps.
Would you, would that be something he would do or would that be in-house from us if we were to write a letter to MDOT on behalf of the planning commission? Or to Barb and then parallel the two together? If we can get Barb to do one, if we do one, would that be something we do in-house here or would you do it as our representation?
We can work collaboratively. That might be more effective if it was, uh, from the planning commission.
Yeah, that's.
But, but we can work on that together if you want.
Carving copy the board of education so that people are actually, you know, so what, everything Mario did, he changed the superintendent and it just ended up in the trash can after all that. You know, because it's always changing. Do you know who the, who knows how well Barbara be?
Do you think the rep, that you would report to is the same one?
The MDOT?
Think there's a different one there?
Yeah, he's the director for this region that I spoke to.
Probably the same guy then.
Yeah, Drew.
Drew, uh, called, was it called?
Uh, Buckner.
Buckner. Okay. But I think attacking it just from speed is not the only, if you attract the beauty like Jen's saying, you know, put an investment on Greshit and making it a beautiful place versus, you know, okay, the speed limit's down, it's still, you know, uh, looks like it looks or it's, doesn't have sidewalks and curbs and all the things that go along with making it look like an attractive area to come and shop in.
We have sidewalks, don't we, and say?
And even that, I, I guess that should be to, in this master plan as well as the size of sidewalks and the areas we want to become. Because if you go down Greshit, there's, you know, five different widths of sidewalk. Because it's not saying, hey, we want people to be able to bike through here and have a standardized width.
Actually, it's scary to walk on Greshit if you're on the side that doesn't have the sidewalk.
Yeah, because you're walking on Greshit.
Right, and, and traffic in today's world is just unbelievable.
Oh, they will pass on the soft shoulder.
I had a semi pass me while I was waiting at the mall. So we went right on the corner, on the thing, on your side.
Two or three times, what, on the shoulder like that?
Yeah. Every morning they drive the shoulder from the corner all the way to it to get in the school. I mean, these are parents that just drive through that shoulder.
Well, that's the side that has the sidewalk.
Yeah. I mean, the whole, the whole aspect of it, the way, look, you can't just change the speed limit. We need to change the whole.
So I know we, we've moved away from downtown a lot. Um, that was my problem. Um, but I guess that's my point of it was that I feel that for as long as I've been on planning and council before that, that we've always focused on improving the downtown as a high priority. It's like, oh, what can we do? What can we do? You meet with these people, we get nowhere. And so I'm just wondering if like we're spinning wheels, if we should maybe just entertain putting our energy somewhere else in the overall master plan that we do as opposed to putting it into the downtown. So I don't know.
Can't we do some of both?
Somebody swear.
Yeah. I mean, well, if something comes knocking on our door, I mean, but I kind of feel like when we talk about meeting with someone, we've met with him how many times, you know? I mean, how many times over the years have we met?
It's not advantageous for him to get involved in that. He has a business that he runs out of there that he, it would never get anywhere else than McCoon County.
We tell him.
But what is business?
The property that sits down there and stuff. I mean, I'm not saying turn away opportunities. Like if opportunities knock on downtown, I'm not saying close the door on them. I'm just saying, you know, maybe where we put our energy though and our primary focus is, is over here and put our secondary focus over there. I'm not saying like take it off the table, like it doesn't exist. I mean, if someone came and knocked on it, I'd love it, but I just feel like we tried to build that bridge a lot. And, I mean, in 10 years, we got fountain, we've got some sidewalks. I don't know, what else have we gotten?
A whole new park.
A sign. What was that list?
A whole new park.
Yeah, a park. I mean, we've really, for, to put as much energy that we have over the years as, as we have, hopes and dreams and meaning and whatever. Nothing's really come out of them yet. So that's all I'm saying. So I'm gonna.
I think that does make sense. I mean, I think have, we can have a strategy for the downtown for sure. We can show a future land use map. We can have objectives and stuff that we are, that we have, we can continue to reinforce those. But I think in terms of the community strategy, in terms of commercial activity, Greshit, Corvus, plenty of your stronger assets, you have the traffic volumes, the properties, the, everything you have going for it. And I think just the nature of how the economy works today, um, I think you definitely recognize again the historic downtown. But I think that's where maybe the future would be is a little there and hopefully it continues and spreads into that downtown.
Right.
I'm looking, Bill, our downtown is being historic. There's one building left, don't it?
It's got the bulbs.
It's got the what?
It's got the bulbs.
And we've altered that building so it actually doesn't like it originally did.
Wow, the houses are historic.
Yeah, the houses and stuff. I mean, I do agree that stuff can be done with the houses if they turn over and stuff like that.
Yeah, there's been a few that have been remodeled, but just a few.
And restored nicely.
Yeah, so I do, I do see, you know, some.
Is there a way we can attach into that as far as, um, the homes to encourage more people to restore those homes that are of more historic nature to, I don't know if there's grants or monies out there that we can help. If we make a district, can they apply for it to help use it for their rehab? And they use, you know, original parts versus the Home Depot door or, you know?
And I think when you second to the historic districts, I'm, I'm not sure if there's a, a bunch of, um, financial incentives that then get produced because of the HDC. But I know typically HDCs then just come with another commission, another board that then has to approve native activity. Um, that happens with, in terms of design aesthetics, um, those type of things. Now the, and then, yeah, any remodel, you have to come before the boards and then get approved for colors and materials and stuff as well. Typically, I don't believe there's, there's now new grants that'd be available to them if that district gets, gets established. If your home is designated historic, uh, when you apply for that, the whole process, then you may be eligible for certain things. But, um, I almost bought a historic home warrant at one point. And there's a whole bunch of different criteria now that you're responsible for, for all the exterior stuff. If you're not like up to, up to snuff for what they're expecting, they could actually take your home and boot you out because you're not meeting their standards for historic.
And it's super expensive for the homeowner because they, once that, they've done that, they're, they're stuck like kind of with those.
You're changing the value of their home from being just a strangle of just rundown homes to historical homes that are of a nature of a hundred thousand back up into 250 because they've, they've got that designation. And if they were able to get some kind of financial incentive to get them up to those points, then that's tax dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I almost think there's like some sort of like way to create some sort of like district or something like that where you're actually capturing finance, like, like what is a TIF or, or DDA or something like that. And then you can then spin that around and make that into a incentive, like an improvement, exterior facade improvement type thing. That's usually applied for commercial businesses, but I imagine if I could do something similar for homes and exteriors and stuff like that. But that, that's a pretty big undertaking if that's something the community would want to do and that's a DDA plan or a TIF plan that you'd have to do. And go from there. That's a different process.
That is something I wanted to.
It's something you could put in the plan.
Yeah, that is something I wanted to entertain with Greshit was the, um, exterior. Like if we did a TIF there, you know, the, um, grants and such for them to improve their appearance and stuff.
There are such things like corridor improvement authorities. That's, that's probably what we probably.
Yeah, I think that's what Jeff and I discussed.
Yeah, so that's probably something we probably entertain more so than like a DDA, traditional DDA. The corridor improvement authority is probably more appropriate for how Greshit's set up and everything else. And that's where you can then leverage the capture and do cleanup enforcement, uh, mini grants or awards to do facade improvements, stuff like that. That could be like one of the objectives in probably another section is to look at setting that up or at least exploring that option. Let me see what that would entail.
I guess if there was anything else for me for like going back to just downtown is just looking at the zoning, revisiting how everything is zoned. It's a little, um, just inconsistent sort of, we did put that light industrial in there last, this year or late last year. And stuff like that. So that's the only other thing I would say for that.
What else? The, that's the family site, correct?
The light industrial was the gentleman from across the street of the park. Um, he's the, uh, the mill, the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
He, he wanted to do some work in there that required light industrial.
Yep.
And so that was where that, that's, and I, I don't even know what the family site is.
Maybe like downtown office or something.
I feel like it was like a mixed use sort of thing.
Yeah. Yeah, but it had a run of the light industrial switch.
Yeah. Anybody else? Any thoughts on anything? So as far as changes, how do, you know, um, Jeff did a, a working document, um, where we could, what's that? Uh, we could make comments on the side?
Yeah, it was on Google.
Google Drive?
Yeah, it was on Google Drive.
Yeah, would you be willing to set something up like that and then maybe over, like have a conversation and then, um, give our input of of changes or why to patients? I don't think we really said why, but.
I can do that.
And then.
Or even on some of these objectives, we could maybe add a couple of things that coincide with it.
Right.
Yeah, I was looking at some of these. Knowing planners who do this before, it's a planner here, they're great planners, but they're going to be a little bit, uh, verbose. And I think there's certain objectives that you can probably finally merge into one, two, three, one, the character reader, the same kind of points or notes. Um, maybe also solidating that. And maybe, maybe you'll repair that something down. The entire future land use section in general, we might find a way to make it a little shorter and, uh, not as many words. And probably, probably try to portray the same messages that we're trying to touch on before. But, um, yeah, I can set up that Google Drive sheet. I'll put the, uh, the master plan up there. Um, then you'll be able to see my edits or anything else and something I'm working through there.
That worked out pretty good.
Yeah, a little bit more interactive.
Yeah, it's probably a little more efficient than having to send you guys attachments all the time too.
Right.
I'm trying to keep that straight.
Okay.
So, yeah, I can do that.
Okay, okay. Okay, so do we want to move on from that? Are we good? Are you good, John? Everybody else good?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, new business, the 2020 planning schedule. Rob, I just sent that to you, um, like at 7 o'clock. But it was just basically setting our schedules for next year. I didn't see any, nothing really screaming of holiday conflicts or anything to me. January, you want your, January, I was reading, January 7th, February 4th, March 3rd, April 7th, May 5th, June 2nd, July 7th, August 4th, September 1st, October 6th, November 3rd, December 1st. So, um, a motion, if you guys are comfortable with that, to approve the 2020 planning schedule. Are you coming? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried for the 2020 planning schedule. Planners report, anything else?
Um, I think I will say that, um, January will be put together a official yearly review of the planners report. Um, so that'll talk about the experiences, the site plans that we've been able to accomplish over the past year, just to have it recorded. I just want to let you guys know that tomorrow is the state of the county, uh, presentation. It's an annual, uh, presentation that, uh, Mark Hackel gives to anyone who wishes to come. It's at the, um, McCollough Performance Arts Center. He'll give a brief overview of what the county's accomplished, some statistics, some graphics, uh, economic, um, data, stuff like that, agent new announcements. Um, and then following the state of the county, there's usually a thing called Taste McColl, where you have, uh, local restaurants and businesses set up their stands and then they give out free samples and food, uh, for all who come. It's a pretty nice reception.
We're involved last three years and it's really nice.
What time is that?
Doors open at 5:30, starts at 6:00.
Yeah, it should be pretty early, so. But it goes late, it's like 10 o'clock, 10 o'clock. There are like, you know, some lodges there around Diablo, there's like all these different types of vendors out there, a lot of food. So if you go on the website, if you go to, uh, mccollough.gov, there should be something out there that says about the state of the county, you should be able to arm speak in there. Uh, just like account proceeds and everything else, but, um, yeah, I encourage you guys to check it out and if you don't go, it's also available on YouTube after, so.
I think actually last year, didn't they Facebook Live it?
Yeah, they did Facebook Live.
I feel like they did.
Yeah. So they, they usually do a really good job with it.
Okay, anything else? All right, couple of comments.
You guys do a great.
Call from the table. A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 7:50.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Need adjourned.